Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Chapman is absent. Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As complied with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner: The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 16, 2025, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're now on special vet applications from Recreation Director Alicia Floyd.
Good evening, mayor and council. We have three returning applications before you. Are there any questions on any of them?
No questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia. We are now on to a presentation for redevelopment of Block 4201, lots 2, 6, and 7, which is 201, Sixth Avenue, 1509, and 1511 Kingsley Street by Asbury Park Apartments and Resort, LLC.
Wait one second. Why don't we do this? And you guys correct me if I'm wrong. Because after we're done with the presentation, we're going to go to public comments. So why don't we get anything from mayor and council out of the way so we can go right from the presentation to public comments? Am I got a problem with that?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll start with Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Oh, I'm just saying good evening to all of you. It's happy to see you. And you know, Friday is Valentine, so make sure you have a happy one. And if someone doesn't bring you some sweets or a flower, buy one for yourself. Love yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Nothing.
Mayor Moore?
Nothing.
Thank you.
City manager and attorney?
Yes.
Nothing.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. All right. All right. We are now on to a presentation by Asbury Park Apartments and Resort, LLC.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and members of the public. My name is Kevin Kennedy. I'm an attorney with an office in Red Bank. I'm here tonight on behalf of my client, Asbury Luxury Apartments and Resort, LLC. For the record, Andy Karas and I are privileged to jointly serve as co-council for this client. However, Mr. Karas is not able to be here tonight. He sends his regards. So my client is a hopeful subsequent developer and is in the process of going through the city's nuanced waterfront redevelopment process. Typically, as you all know very, very well, a subsequent developer application is submitted, a technical review committee meeting is scheduled, there's an informal presentation to the city council, and then if endorsed, we are then authorized to go to the next step to negotiate a subsequent developer agreement and process, hopefully process, the city process and ordinance designating the client, the applicant, as the subsequent developer. We have been respectfully on a bit of a merry-go-round here, and we're looking to get back on track and with your hopeful support and architectural endorsement tonight. So I know we don't have a lot of time, but I just wanted to, like, two minutes just to explain where we've been, where we, how we got here, where we want to go, and hopefully the process after tonight. So first up, I want to thank Michelle Alonso and staff. They've always been very helpful and very pleasant. And secondly, though not statutorily required, I understand that the city council has expressed a preference, a desire for even greater transparency than what the city requires. So against that backdrop, we arranged for notice in accordance with the city's established special procedure for this, and I submitted a confirming affidavit of publication and certification. And as I've said before, for what it's worth, I applaud the city's continued commitment to even extra transparency beyond what the statute calls for. We've identified the properties, and by way of very brief background, as you all know, this is the site that previously hosted the Oceanic Motel. Now, obviously motels are, serve very important purposes in life and in society, but from a zoning standpoint, they can be a little intense and presumably not a permitted or presumably a pre-existing non-conforming use. My client recently became owners of the property, and as I understand, the Oceanic Motel was a fairly distressed use in terms of some long-term claims, some quality of life issues, and my client became owner of the property and arranged for the demolition. Now, there's a legal standpoint, sometimes from a legal strategy, sometimes people say, oh, don't demolish it yet. But to my, credit to my client, my client had a no-nonsense attitude and arranged for that to be developed because he thought that was better for the city. So I applaud that decision. Also, once the structure was demolished, just again, not that this is relevant, but my client basically let some other developers use the site as a staging ground.
Can you move the mic a little closer to your mouth?
Sure.
People in the back are having trouble hearing.
Okay, is that better?
Much better.
Okay, thank you. And so when the structure was demolished, my client allowed some other developers to use the site as a staging ground for other approved construction. And just as you know by its very nature, construction can be sometimes inconvenient for the public in terms of truck, traffic, machinery. So anyway, in some small part, I thank my client for allowing, to minimize some public inconvenience by allowing that site to be utilized as a staging ground. So now, for the relevant subsequent developer history with this file, we previously submitted a subsequent developer application, and we had a technical review committee meeting probably a year and a half ago. I'll call that TRC meeting number one. And it was successful. We were authorized to go to the next step, which is a presentation before this very city council. And we appeared before you all, informal presentation, and I think that there were some requests for modifications, and modifications were made. And ultimately, we received the endorsement to go forward, to have the, start the commencement of the subsequent developer negotiation process, and I believe a draft agreement has been prepared. However, an issue was subsequently raised regarding a claim that because of a potential need for a technical variance, there was a claim that perhaps the TRC meeting should have been noticed. And there was a concern that we should go to the TRC again. So we on our side didn't really agree with that, but obviously in the spirit of moving forward and in the spirit of complying, wanting to comply with city's established procedure, and notwithstanding timing sensitivities, we agreed to reappear before the TRC. And we appeared before that TRC, I think it was June 24 of 2024. And in conjunction with that, the plans were actually even revised. So anyway, we're coming, so here we are tonight, coming back to you for a presentation on the architectural integrity or architectural elements. And respectfully, in many ways, the city council has already endorsed the prior architectural rendering. There have been some changes, but as my applicants or witnesses will testify, not so much architectural changes from what you all previously saw and endorsed, but rather some changes with the yard, and we'll go into that, and reductions and things. So we are hoping, since we've already presented to this governing body, we're hoping that you're, we have addressed your concerns, and we're hoping, respectfully requesting that we would again receive your informal endorsement to take it to the next level. That's the overall story. I have two witnesses tonight. One is Yohay Aldo, who is the member of the LLC. He's not really going to testify unless you all have questions for him. And I have our architect here, Dan Zanato, who will go through what we previously submitted, what changes, and he's going to go through the various changes and what we're presenting tonight. So in conclusion, just from my introduction, we are committed, my client is committed to the city of Asbury Park, the client is committed to developing, the client is committed to developing in accordance with the waterfront redevelopment plan, the client is anxious to become, hopefully become a subsequent, appointed subsequent developer. We're anxious to proceed to the planning board, we're excited to build and develop, and we're excited to hopefully operate this facility in the great city of Asbury. So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll introduce Yohay Aldo, and I'll have Dan Zanato, our architect, present information to you, if that's acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Yohay, why don't you just, where is Yohay? This is Yohay. He's one of the principals of the entity, and this is Dan. Why don't you just introduce yourself?
Daniel Zanato with Polo Architects.
Now, I know this is informal presentation. Do you want me to go through its qualifications or anything, or just have them? Okay. So Dan, why don't you just, we talked earlier today, and we've talked over the last several weeks, why don't you just give a brief overview of what the project is, and from an architectural standpoint, what changes we made, because I know there were some changes based upon TRC, there were some changes from the city council informally, and there were some, some negotiations with some neighbors. So why don't you just go through everything so that the city council has a, and the public has a good idea of how we got here?
Sure, thank you. Can everyone hear? Hello?
And just so the public knows, this is a conceptual taking a temperature presentation. Nothing's getting voted on tonight, just FYI.
Thank you. And that's an excellent point, Deputy Mayor, and we did specifically put in the notice that no official action would be taken. Thank you.
Anybody standing? There's plenty of seats up here if you want to sit down.
First, excuse me, I was going to say you can, that wire's going to fit up here. You can talk right here if you want.
Okay, can everyone hear me now?
Yep.
All right. Then quickly, I'll just kind of introduce the project, give a little bit of background. I'll go through some of the floor plans, the renderings that we put together, and then I'll highlight some of the changes that we've, we've made on the project over the last two years. So first, just to kind of orient yourself to the site, you can look at the large map here, and see the oceanfront there. The project is located just north of Convention Hall, and it's bounded by Kingsley, Webb Street, Sixth Ave., and Seventh Ave. To highlight the statistics of the project, there's 94 total dwelling units, two of them one-bedroom, 49 two-bedroom, 43 three-bedroom. It's a total of eight stories, 114 feet, and we're providing 152 parking spaces. Walking through the plans quickly, on the left is the lower-level parking. So the main area of the building is a parking field that will have stacked parking, automated parking, and there's also space for bike storage and handicap parking as well, a elevator lobby in the corner. Now, each of the, we'll call them townhouse buildings, which are the kind of outbuildings on the wings of the site here, they all have access to this parking garage as well. Everything is kind of connected underground here. And moving on to the first floor, there's also a second level of parking on the first floor, and we have amenity spaces, fitness, community room, lobby space, and there's a few apartments as well. And then, if we want to highlight the totals here, the self-parking, we have 92 parking spaces on the lower level, excuse me, 60 parking on the first floor, a total of 152 parking spaces. And we're meeting all the requirements of the waterfront redevelopment plan without taking any deduction for EV. Moving up through the building here, the second floor also has a pool deck and green-roof courtyard that is accessed from the building. Also, all of the townhouse buildings are connected as well. Moving up through the typical floors, you can see we have a mix of two- and three-bedroom units. And just some of, moving on to some of our renderings, this is a shot of the, the corner entry at Kingsley and Sixth Ave. And here, a night shot showing kind of the overall building, some of the materials that we've, we've picked here, we'll go into a little more detail later in the presentation. Another view, and you can just take note of how it aligns with the building across the street, the North Beach condos, the generous distance from the, from the building to the curb. This is a view from Kingsley looking south, and this highlights how the mass of the building steps down from eight stories to four stories and how it meets the adjacent building. A view looking east, also important to note the relationship to the building across Kingsley. This view is from the corner of Webb and Seventh, looking southeast. You see the townhouse structure in the mid-block, adjacent to a new construction that has just recently been built. The relationship there, you can see how the, the front of the property line aligns with the, the new construction. And again, just another view of our, our entry and how that's kind of recessed from the, the corner, and how it will activate the street front with the lobby space beyond. Another view of Kingsley looking south. And finally, a view of the townhouse on Seventh Ave., looking east. So just to highlight some of the changes that have happened to this plan since the last presentation to council and the initial TRC meeting, we've decreased the lot coverage. It previously exceeded 90%. We've brought that down to about 86%. And by doing that, we increased the permeable area. The density has decreased. We're down to 94 units, previously 98 units. We've increased the parking count, previously 148, now 152. We've added indoor bike storage for 64 bicycles. We've added five-foot side yards on Webb Street. We've added five-foot side yards on Seventh Ave. These changes were all based on discussions with neighbors and, and requests from councils. So the six-foot side yard was added on Sixth Avenue to accommodate a neighbor request and per city council request. We recessed the building corner, the one-and-a-half-story garage entry to preserve sightlines for the adjacent neighbor. And we removed balconies at the townhouse along Kingsley to accommodate the adjacent property owner. We've also reconfigured the pool amenity and green roof area to accommodate the adjacent property owner. And then lastly, revised facade design and materials per city council request. So go into a little bit more detail, if that's okay, about some of these changes. This diagram here on the left highlights the areas that are, have been added as far as setbacks and new green space. So overall, the footprint of the building has been reduced. We've added side yards at Seventh Ave. and at Webb Street and to the neighbor on Sixth Ave. This, this slide here highlights the change on Sixth Avenue. If you look at the, the top image, you'll see that the building has been pulled back. We did have a four-story mass on the side of the building there that we have removed now, so it's now, everything is in line, and we have space for, for windows on that instead of just a blank facade. And we are giving a six-foot yard on the side of the building to accommodate the neighbor. And we've also pushed back the garage entry to preserve sightlines, so that the, where the building meets the ground at the corner there is pushed back to align with the neighboring building, with the front of their porch. This slide here is a diagram of the changes to the, the green roof area and the pool amenity. So there previously was a two-story indoor pool and fitness center located above the green roof, and we've removed that entirely. The, the pool is now an outdoor pool. It's been relocated, pushed as close to our building as we could put it. And we've also taken away the, the rear balconies on the Kingsley townhouses, so that there's additional space between our building and the neighboring building behind it. And then lastly, just the, to highlight some of the changes to the facade, we, we broke up the, the scale of the mass and the grid facade to break down the scale and make it more residential to represent the units that are behind the facade. We've incorporated more wood accents to give it a warmer feel, and we've changed the base color for the material down there to a lighter, warmer gray as opposed to the dark gray that was there previously. Now, this, this rendering was what was also presented at the last time we presented to the city council, so this has already been viewed, and we were approved to move forward at that time. That's all we have. Thank you.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You're showing the utilities in the low, lower parking level. Now, is that guaranteed? Because, I mean, it has New Jersey Natural Gas and all the utilities, that that's where they're going to be, because don't you need?
The utilities are up on the first floor. If you look at the, the plan, we have spaces kind of in the core of the building there. There's electrical room.
I'm looking at page A0. It says, "Overall Lower Parking Level Plan," and it has storage and utility, storage and utility, storage and utility.
Okay.
Storage and utility.
Those are kind of placeholders for the, the storage areas for those townhouse spaces, but the main utilities for the, the building will be located on the first floor in those utility rooms.
And that's already been okay?
So those are really storage rooms that are marked on the, on the lower level, below the townhouses, and that space, that could be for tenant storage and also additional bike storage.
And you already got the okay from all the utility companies that that's where they're going to go, or could there be changes when they say, hey, we can't go there?
We'll have to coordinate that with the utilities.
So these are conceptual, may not be actual?
Conceptual locations for the utilities.
Okay. The stack parking, are you going to have a full-time attendant, or is this going to be up to the tenants to figure out how to do it?
It's a self-parking lift system, correct?
Okay.
It's a push-button kind of retrieve and lower your car.
So I see it, part of them says pit stackers, and some of them say stacker lifts. So I guess I know what they are. The pit stacker's going to go down.
And the stacker lift goes up.
Right. We had another project trying to put in pit stackers, and the DEP shut them down, saying they can't be built. Are you sure these can be built?
Yeah, for me, in some cases, there is a flood elevation issues, but when I work for the flood elevation, that will be something that will pose an issue. Additionally, it's a self-parking. They don't require much.
Okay, I just wanted to bring to your attention, somebody else tried to do this.
Thank you.
And they made them fill all in with concrete.
Right.
Okay. That's all the questions I had now.
I can do it. Go ahead. I have questions. Can you just pick, show me the pictures again of the view corridors, because in comparison to the houses, how far out is this building from the houses around it?
You go to the, the ground floor plan?
On the first floor plan, you can see kind of the, there we go, the kind of the gray box for the adjacent buildings.
So you, and I do want to say, I appreciate the amount of work that you guys have put into making changes to this project. So just for my edification, the, the view corridor is still blocked, right? The houses are still, the building still fronts out in front of the houses.
No, the, the ground floor is pushed in. So these are the upper floors. Once we get past the, kind of the one-and-a-half floor of the, the ground level, then the building comes back out to the property line?
Can you show me in a picture that?
Like, if you go...
Pass.
That's, that's Webb Street.
Right there.
That one.
Can you enlarge that picture? Okay. And then go a little bit to the, to my right, so I can see.
Show the houses.
Yeah. Okay. So about how many inches, how many feet out from those houses is it?
We're, we're six feet from our property line. I can't say for sure how, how far that is from the existing house, because they also have a side yard, so it's, can tell you it's greater than six feet.
I think the question, correct me if I'm wrong, will the porches have a sight view where they'll be looking at a building? Porches of the two houses.
The, the front of the, the parking entry aligns with the front of the porch.
So if I'm sitting on the porch, I'm going to be looking at?
So if you're sitting on the porch and you look diagonally down the street towards the, because the street is angled, you will have the same view towards the ocean that you would.
Doesn't look, it, it doesn't...
Well, 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 everybody will have a time to question.
It doesn't look that way, because from your photo, it looks as though the two homes are pushed back, and the garage is forward. So it, it doesn't look that way.
Can you take me over to the apartment building with the balconies? I think it's 210, Seventh? Okay, how much space is it between that building and the existing building there?
From our building, the building to the right?
To the building with the mural on it.
Again, we, we have a five-foot set yard, a five-foot side yard.
Is there a walkway or like a driveway there, or is it all just up against the balcony?
No, on our, the side of our building?
Yeah, on the side of the building with the mural.
No, there's no driveway there.
What, how much feet between those two buildings?
I don't have an exact number. I can tell you that we're, we're five feet from our property line, plus whatever the existing side yard of the existing building is.
Well, the complaint is that people are, you know, essentially can pass to the next building a cup of water, right? They go out on their back. I mean, it, it looks that close. That's, that's what I'm asking you about.
We very specifically did not put a balcony on that area. In addition, it's a complete five feet. In addition, there are, there are balconies. So I'm not sure.
But they have balconies.
So they have a yard and a balcony, right?
Yeah, I'm asking, yeah, I'm asking, how close is that to your building?
So they have a certain yard distance. It's about probably around five feet, but we have an additional five feet that we put on our property. So we shrunk our building by five feet on both sides to accommodate both of these neighbors. So even though this is zero lot line, redevelopment time, right, we specifically shrunk it. That was part of the things that we did. We shrunk it on both ends, five feet. So we had a loss of total 10 feet frontage on the building. We know to accommodate that further.
Are you saying that there's 10 feet between building on the left to the building on the right, or five feet?
Five feet. Five feet on my property, and there's even more than that on their property.
So there's a total of 10 feet?
There's probably 10 or more feet between us, yes.
And then also, I don't know if it's R4, but this photo here with this house, if you could turn to that one. That one. What is the distance between your building and that home?
That space where actually the zero lot.
Pardon me?
Where the zero lot.
So I just want to understand what you're saying again. Between 210-7th and your building, you're saying is 10 feet?
Correct.
Okay, and there's what, grass there or a driveway there? Like what exists there?
Grass, grass.
Grass there?
Grass is grass, but that would be.
And then what we're also saying is because there's balconies currently on that side, that they're a few feet out. So that eats into your 10 feet.
Again, it's their balconies.
I'm not saying it's your balconies, I'm just trying to understand. I'm just trying to understand.
The distance.
Yeah.
Okay, so from a balcony to the building, I guess, I'm trying to figure out how much space these people have. No, less than five feet, is that a fair statement?
It's impossible to be less than five feet.
Okay, so a minimum of five feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Minimum five feet on our property, in addition to the fact that their balconies are not at the property line. They're not at the property line, their balconies are set away. So there's an additional yard there in addition to our yard.
And, okay. And this also has the view corridor blocked, if I'm looking at that right? I mean, I understand that you brought it in, and I appreciate that.
I'm not, I apologize. If I may ask, you keep on referencing the view corridor.
Well, I'm not a planner, so I'm using layman's terms. As John Moore said, when you walk out onto your porch, can you look down the street? That is what I'm asking. And do you see the ocean or water, or do you see a building?
You will see the neighboring building.
Right.
Which is built on the lot. So, okay, they won't see that neighboring building at this point, but what we did was we set it back so that there is some sort of an angled view for them.
I don't know what an angled view means. What does that mean?
Angled view means we opened it up, so that there isn't a wall coming right at you, right next to you to your height of your porch. So we pushed it, pulled it in, and pulled it over. So that when they come to the porch, they do have an angled view towards the street and it's not shadowing. That was something that we went through with the city council the first time.
Okay. But if I walk out and I look, I see a building. That's the first thing I see. Okay. On both, on all, on both sides, on both 6th and 7th.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm just going to be honest, I don't love that, right?
You said what?
I said I don't love that.
Okay.
Questions? Do you have a question?
No, we haven't. We had the same questions ago. What can you see, what's next?
But they're going to stay around and answer questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're going to go right to the public session. You guys.
Do you mind if I sit here and I'll take?
Oh, absolutely. Please do, because you're going to need the microphones.
All right. We're now on to the public participation. I have a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public participation portion of the meeting is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There'll be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Please note ordinances 2025-1 through 4 will be tabled tonight due to the absence of the
Twist that a little bit.
Can we ask people who are talking on this to talk first? Or no?
No, hold on one second, please. Go ahead. Thank you. Just, we need your name and address, please.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Susan Makitis. My address is 63 Papet Drive in Atlantic Highlands. However, I am representing Food and Water Watch. With more than 2 million supporters, Food and Water Watch fights for sustainable food, clean water, and a livable climate for all of us. You have helped us in the past by supporting our climate efforts, specifically by passing a resolution to stop the proposed Kaysby Power Plant in Woodbridge. With your support, we were successful in stopping this polluting project. We are once again asking for your help. The New Jersey Legislature will be considering the Superfund Act, S 3545 and A 4696, a bill that would force polluters to pay for the damage they cause to our environment. The bill has already been passed by the State Senate Committee. It is similar to bills already passed by the states of New York and Vermont. As a coastal community, you know better than most that Asbury Park is vulnerable to the effects of climate change. If passed, any municipality in need of climate change adaptation and resilience projects would be able to apply for the funds raised by the act. This is a great opportunity for Asbury Park to support a bill that would provide funding at no cost to your taxpayers. Will you support this bill by resolution at your next city council meeting? I have included a summary document and a draft resolution for your consideration that I'll make available after the meeting. Many thanks in advance, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we got this late this afternoon, and I asked Anthony to call you and say, "Hey, we're going to do this, you don't have to come out tonight in the cold weather." But we appreciate all you do for the...
Thank you, and we appreciate the support that Asbury Park gives us all the time. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Gabriela Cuccinata. I live at 209 Sixth Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity to give comments. So there are so many issues with this plan that are inconsistent with the Bradley Plan and the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan that I can only touch upon the most egregious. The proposed structure will destroy the airflow and sightlines of the homes to the west. It will aggravate the flooding that is already a problem in this area. It will add more concrete and fewer spaces for trees to thrive and add another heat island area to the city maps. My home was built by Edward Stroud in 1894. Two years later, Edward built the house at 207 Sixth Avenue. The blocks west of our home have many original historic homes, so it's a very beautiful area of the city. The Waterfront Redevelopment Plan indicates that whatever is built should fit into the neighborhood. The first objective on page nine is to preserve the character and history of Asbury Park. Page 63 of the plan indicates the frontages of the new building shall be harmonious with the block face on both sides of its street. The proposed plan is neither harmonious or consistent with this mandate. Its height and design totally do not respect the historic feel of the residential neighborhood. The redevelopment allowances on height, as illustrated on page 70 of the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan, only apply to full block development. For full block development, the plan requires a reduction of four stories halfway up the block. This lot is actually six, there's originally six lots on this block, and they have four of them. So there must be a reduction down to four blocks on Sixth Avenue. The density of this building for the given lot size does not make sense. It also is far from what anyone would consider luxury accommodations. There is railroading through, at least there was in the last plan, railroading through the bedrooms. The proposed 94 units with approximately 230 bedrooms on four city lots will totally change the relaxed vibe of this neighborhood. Contrast this to 240 bedrooms that make up the Asbury Ocean Club. The Ocean Club consists of a full city block and is 16 stories high. They are proposing squashing almost the same density in this little area. Also, the Ocean Club has 411 parking spots that don't require stacking that will be a problem if there's a power outage. And I'm running out of time, I know. But anyway, I think that there's problems with flooding, there's problems with parking. This area is already, people are parking the main street if they live in this area in the summertime. It's a problem. I thank you for your consideration. I think that this plan just needs to be totally reworked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on one second, don't start that. Michelle, how high, what is the redevelopment plan called for on this spot? Is it eight stories?
Certain parts can be eight, but others have to drop down to four. The amendment in 2019 gives the discretion to the planning board to determine where the breaks are. The original plan shows on the height map, sections that can be eight and the sections that can be four. But the amendment that we passed in 2019 lets the planning board determine where the height breaks. Does that make, does that make sense? Okay.
Sorry. Okay, all right. Hello, my name's Frank Cuccinata. I live at 209 Sixth Avenue. I have 17 reasons for objecting to the proposed building plans. However, I'm only going to present the top nine. First one being, 95 residential units for this footprint is too dense. There's eight stories and 114 feet is too high for this residential area. All the other development in the area has limited themselves to four, maybe five stories. Nothing on this side of Kingsley is eight stories, and it shouldn't be eight stories. How does striping result in three additional parking spaces? According to the plan, 152 parking spots is not adequate for 95 or 94 residential units. Most of the other developments are providing at least two parking spots per unit. The other thing is, there's only one or two one-bedrooms, then there's a lot of two-bedrooms and a lot of three-bedrooms. There's got to be some more parking for those additional bedroom units. While the master plan allows for some larger numbers, that's for bulk requirements which are not in play here, because they're not taking up the full block. Lack of setbacks from row, right-of-way restricts airflow, sunlight, and view for the existing full taxpaying residents in the area. And everything downstream of not just us, but everybody inland will suffer. Forty-four pit stackers and 30 stack lifters are just a disaster waiting to happen. The drawings R5 and R6 clearly illustrate how out of proportion the new project's dimensions are compared to the existing buildings. I ask that this plan not be approved. I would ask that you require the developer to present something that is more respectful to the existing full-paying taxpayers and residents in the area. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roger Mumford. I'm the developer who recently completed the Rhythm, and I've met with Yohay on a number of occasions, not more recently. If I may, can I come to the screen, please?
Yes, you have three minutes, so you can walk and talk out.
Okay, so a couple, there's a lot of deceptive stuff here. For example, I met with Yohay to make sure that this area would not be more than four stories. His first floor, because of the stack parking, is a story and a half. And when you look on Seventh Avenue, you see the same thing. You'll see the Rhythm, which is muted for whatever reason. And then the building next door is the same number of stories, but it's a story taller. This is really five stories. Yohay, you've got to drop this 10 feet, or you're blocking everything you said you would do.
You're pulling in.
Okay, that's not, that's close conversations.
Can I see the floor plan quickly, sir? Because there's no colored pictures in terms of aerials, drone shots, or anything that would give this audience the feel of just how utterly preposterous this whole thing is. So can I see the floor plan, please? Okay, so because this building isn't very deep, the units, we call them railroad, you go in and it's bedroom, bedroom, bedroom. Is this just a pure rental, or is it 47?
Look, look, look. There's no cross conversation. Address us.
I apologize. Okay, well, I've never seen a 47 product like this in my life, you know, living in Panama City. But the reality is that this floor plan, if anybody blows it up and looks at it, you're going to find, my building has only two and a half, three times, rather, this one is two or three, and three times the volume. But I've got 14 units and 28 bedrooms in a spectacular building. This is preposterous. And over the winter, with Michelle Alonso and others, weekly I was on calls about, "Roger, you can't move the electric," even though the utility company determines everything. The builder has no choice in it. And I said, "Why is it that we're, on a building that I'm building that's a jewel, why is it that we're torturing me when you're considering an eight or 10-story building?" And they said, "Oh, but that's a different time." So I'm here tonight to say, "Well, it's upon us, and when people see the separation, it's going to be unbelievable. And I'm going to get my stuff together, I'm going to come in with a real presentation, and I will be here at every meeting as long as it takes to make sure this building is never built." Thank you.
Kevin, can you, we've had this problem before. Can you get me from floor to ceiling, for every building, the four-story and the eight-story, what the feet is? So is it nine feet? Is it 12 feet? Is it 13 feet? If we could... What he's saying, we've had a problem before.
Okay.
Where it's like 16 feet, and we're considering that one story.
Dan, do you know the information offhand, or is that something we'll have to get back?
I'd have to get back to give you accurate, but it's not 16 feet.
But we'll get you that information.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria Peretti, and my address is 305 Sixth Avenue. I've been a full-time resident since 2014. My house was built in 1894, and it's a historic Victorian. I am writing this letter to ask that you take into consideration the negative impacts of the proposed project, the 201 Sixth Avenue, 1509, and 1511 Kingsley Street. To begin with, Sixth Avenue consists mainly of two- and three-story buildings. The proposed project is eight stories high and does not fit with the character of this residential block. The proposed project will create a massive increase of vehicular traffic on this residential street. It's already increased significantly ever since the traffic pattern was changed on Sunset Avenue. Vehicles driving east towards the beach can't drive straight to Ocean Avenue, so they turn onto Webb Street and wind up on Sixth Avenue. During the summer months, it's even worse. The proposed structure appears to extend out more onto the sidewalk than North Beach. This will impede airflow and block the ocean view enjoyed by many residents, including myself. The proposed project is out of proportion with the quiet north end. The recently completed Rhythm condominiums on Seventh Avenue is more the scale for the area. The new Pulte Homes project on Kingsley Street near Sixth Avenue is three stories and blends with the neighborhood. In addition to the above, the height of the proposed project will restrict sunlight, thus creating more shadow on Sixth Avenue and surrounding streets. A more comprehensive study should be made available to the public pertaining on how a 114-foot-tall structure will affect sunlight and airflow. Eighteen other projects in town that I've researched are in the three, four, and five stories high. The addition of 94 units for the proposed project will automatically and continuously create more car traffic, more sanitation trucks, more delivery trucks on a residential street. Although the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan was adopted in the early 2000s, the proposed project is not in line with the original Bradley Plan, where avenues were designed in such a way as to maximize airflow and minimize the obstruction of ocean views. The developer, Asbury Luxury Apartments and Resorts LLC, wishes to build a tall, high-density structure to maximize their profits.
I'm going to have to ask you to finish your paragraph. If you have somebody else with you, you can pass on to them, and they can finish reading it. There you go.
Gloria, what's your address again?
305 Sixth Avenue.
I'm Ben Hall, 307 Sixth Avenue, Gloria's neighbor. The developer, Asbury Luxury Apartments and Resorts LLC, wishes to build a tall, high-density structure to maximize their profits. I get it. I understand capitalism. However, I also believe the developer is not taking into consideration how this project will negatively affect the neighborhood and its residents. Please take the above issues into consideration, as this massive development will fundamentally change the... change the lives, character, and quality of life in the quiet North End. In closing, I want to say that just because you can doesn't mean you shouldn't. Thank you, Gloria Peretti, February 12, 2025, and Ben Hall. And I'll, I'll just echo the comments of my neighbors as well. I feel the same way. I live next door to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Good evening. Timothy B. Middleton. I'm an attorney in Walthamshire. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Forkes, who happen to live at 207 Sixth Avenue, which is the house adjacent to the eight-story building and to the west. They are impacted by far the most with this proposal. I'm going to raise essentially two issues. One is the lack of compatibility and the lack of sensitivity to my clients and the proposal. And I'm also going to address the intensity of the proposal, and I'll do that using objective numbers. Regarding the compatibility, the building is proposed to be six feet from my client's property. Put that perspective. I'm six foot. That table is about six foot, the white table up front. Six feet. The building's a hundred and fourteen feet high. It's eight stories, not including the mezzanine. Does that show sensitivity? Does that show compatibility? They applauded themselves tonight because it was zero feet, but now that six feet is a big deal. You know, I think, I think, I think that's preposterous. Number two, in terms of compatibility, before 2018, the developer was required to develop the whole block. So unlike, unlike some other situations in Atlantic City or New York City, developer would come in, develop the whole block, and we wouldn't have issues where single-family residences were being really overwhelmed with an eight-story building. Views, that was, that was an interesting comment from the architect, i.e. that the views of my client would not be impacted. I assure you there's a following, and my, my client's here. We spoke with Mr. Kennedy in the summer, very good, very great to deal with. His client went out and put a yellow tape where the building would be after it got moved back. If he sits down on his porch, he sees nothing but the building. If he walks down the steps and looks up, he can see the street. All these views are blocked from the house and from the porch, and certainly the ocean views are blocked. And I defy them to come forward with an accurate portrayal of that, of where the building is relative to our porch and house. And the only way you do it is you have to take a shot from west to east to show exactly where the building is and where it's impacting my client. Finally, in terms of intensity, anybody can just come up and say, hey, I think it's too intense. But I'm not going to do that. I'm going to use objective criteria. The applicant is developing fifty-one percent of the block. And I want to put that in perspective.
I'm going to have to, I'm done. Let your client finish the reading.
Hi, William Forkes, 207 Sixth Ave. I've been a homeowner in town since, in the city since 2013. We've purchased 207 Sixth Ave in 2020, and the, the city approved plans for us to restore the house. And, you know, I think my wife did a phenomenal job. She unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. So what I have here is a presentation that just, you know, it's, it's a, it's a informal presentation, but it just goes through some, some numbers and ratios, and I would like to bring up to, to the council.
We'll, we'll get them at the end, so use your time. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I don't, you know, so, so basically, the, the block, the applicant had, is, yeah, here, just take this. You can hand them out. The applicant's property is approximately fifty-one percent of the block, just over half. And they are looking at taking, Tim, where's our numbers here? So they're, they're taking up over two-thirds, and, yes, so based on, based on a hundred and forty-three units per the, per the redevelopment plan, they should have about approximately seventy-three units on this, on their fifty-one percent of the block. You know, I, I think there's also some logic here, yeah, and they're proposing ninety-four, but I think there's some logic here that if the city was okay with 209 and 207 restoring those houses, our houses, our homes, you know, why, how does this fit in with the neighborhood per the redevelopment plan of the, you know, North Shore redevelopment plan? So that, like, I just think there's like a little bit of logic here of like, what do we want, what kind of president do we want to set here? Are we setting like this stacked parking, high-density, next to these homes that are historic, that were built in the early nineteen hundreds, eighteen hundreds? And so I, I just think that, you know, you could see through this, there's all kinds of ratios here that just seem preposterous, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's, you know, I have a six-year-old daughter, and, and there's a pool and a hundred-foot building that's going to be next to a pool that you guys approved, that we're going to start construction on in March. So, you know, we're trying to do, you know, have a nice house. We understand we're in a redevelopment zone, but at the end of the day, this is just, this doesn't make sense. Pulte did a nice stacked townhome project. You know, Hovnanian, you know, I know it's not really announced, but the seventh to eighth ave block, you know, they've, I've seen some plans. I happen to be in the real estate business, and they've got a really nice product that they're putting over there. And it's a lot nicer than, than what's proposed adjacent to us by the applicant. So that's all I got.
Denise Nadell, 209 Sixth Avenue. I've lived there now several months, and I just want to tell you that that neighborhood is pristine. You see the same people walking down the street every day with their pets. And it's a neighborhood. This is going to be a massive wall, completely separating the two houses from the beachfront. That doesn't make any sense to me. Also, the other issue is the parking is going to be on Sixth Avenue, the entrance. We're not talking about how much traffic's going to go in and out of that street. I just can't see how that, it could handle it, the way the street is designed. And that's another big issue. So ditto to what everyone else said, and I hope that this project does not go through. Thank you.
Can you just show me a picture where the, the rhythm is in comparison to this building?
Yeah.
The rhythm of this plan is those.
Okay. And you don't, you don't have a picture of it on the seven sides?
I think we do.
Yeah, there's a picture. Right there.
There it is.
There it is.
Okay.
Just point it, point it out, Dan.
Oh, the one that's faded. I got you. So just for my edification again, between the rhythm and your building, how, how much space is there?
They built their property all the way ten feet from their lot line. They've built five stories all the way in. And my, my, what's in my backyard is just the one and a half stories for the parking. I'm commit three. We did, we specifically reduced it. We used to have amenity space there, and then we removed it for them. So essentially, he's using my backyard as his backyard, because he has only ten feet between the back of this building and his property. The original intent is that he is within this only area that he's allowed eight stories. It's supposed to be eight stories and three stories in the back, right? He very specifically built a five-story structure all the way to the back, an average height of eleven-point-six feet for, for his floors. And he goes all the way, stretches all the way to the back. He left only ten feet in the rear. And then he came to me with this request, you know, I need my, I need my windows to see and so forth. So that's where we removed, that's where that diagram that Daniel showed before, we removed amenity space. So we have a one and a half story in the back there. But besides that, he gets the entire view of my green roof.
Okay.
And in addition, that he's built on the property.
Didn't answer the question.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kathy Hurwitz. I live at 313 Sixth Avenue, historic house on the block just west of this proposed development. I would like to reiterate that I agree with, with everything that, that my neighbors have spoken about earlier. And just talk about the scale and how wrong it is for this neighborhood. It, it's just, it, it's ignoring pretty much everything around it. And it seems like it just is plopped down in a spot that it shouldn't be. The north side is different, and west of Kingsley is, is different and should be treated that way and approached that way. And I think it's really, it stings us as, as homeowners and people who respect the neighborhood. And it's clear that, that this, this project does not respect the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to switch gears a little bit. My name is Kylie Mandeville, and I live on Arthur Drive in Red Bank, but I'm a social work intern with the Asbury Park School District. I want to thank the council for all that you do for Asbury. Today, I wanted to speak about Asbury's status as a sanctuary city, meaning that there are policies which limit local law enforcement cooperation with federal immigration enforcement. It, of course, does not mean that law enforcement in Asbury interferes with organizations like ICE, but that they do provide certain info to ICE without warrants. An example of these kind of policies at the state level is, as of November 2018, the Attorney General of New Jersey issued the Immigrant Trust Directive, which prohibits NJ police officers from participating in federal immigration raids, as well as prohibits them from stopping, questioning, arresting, searching, or detaining individuals based solely on actual or suspected immigration status. This directive is still in place regardless of who is the, the president. This is an amazing protection for those in our community and state, but I want to bring our attention to the designation federally of certain locations deemed as sensitive meeting, and immigration enforcement should not take place here. These are places like bus stops, college campuses, churches, medical facilities, and schools. On January 21st, Acting Department of Homeland Security Secretary Benjamin Huffman issued a directive which rescinds this designation of sensitive areas, thereby permitting ICE to take actions near schools or even inside schools if producing a certain warrants. We're seeing the effects of these policies right now in Asbury Park, and I'm sure many of you, if not directly impacted, are feeling the fear for yourself, your family, and our community. Recently, a parent was dropping off their child at Bradley Elementary School, and upon returning home, was detained by ICE. The fear of these authorities has a documented impact on attendance in schools when the family members of students are undocumented, or even fear of being profiled as such based on their appearance. We have noticed high rates of absenteeism since Trump's election in the Asbury Park School District across all four schools. This data is currently being compiled by the Central Office Administration of the Asbury Park School District to see really the clear impact on all of these schools. And all that is to say, I'm requesting today for more information from the city council as to what ordinances have been passed that affirm Asbury Park as a sanctuary city. And if they are publicly available, I may have missed them on the website in looking in over, so that could be my fault, but making those more well-known. And, yeah, that, my, my second thing is that you make these ordinances known and/or pass one similar to other sanctuary cities in New Jersey and similar states. Basically, we want to protect the children and families that are the fabric of this community, and I think that support from the city council on this in any way would be an amazing step towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have to get back to you with some of that information. So if you could leave us a contact information?
Okay, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Maloki. I'm from 404 Seventh Avenue. This is my first meeting, so getting used to it all. I was not knowing what I was going to see today, but after seeing this, I mean, I live on Seventh Ave. I have my neighbors. I know everyone on my block. I've been here for about five years. I have a friend with a balcony that we were, Amy, you were talking about, that's facing on Seventh Ave, the one with the mural. I live on the same facing side of my building, and I do have a bigger building next to me, but it's about forty to fifty feet in between us. I still get a lot of sunlight blockage, and I'm fortunate to not have full blockage, but I'm just thinking that the value of like living there is going to go down. The value of these houses are going to go down. Just think about the people who are already established there, who already pay their rent. It's all going to be collapsing, but, yeah, that's my view. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Hi, 209 Sixth Avenue, Lauren. I've never been on this part before, only grandma, so it's been a little weird for me. But I also wanted to mention that my family's been here for almost seventy years, and I had the pleasure of living with my grandmother for three. I was an eighth, and ever since I've been born, I'm becoming here for, for the remainder of my life, I've never seen solution. I've only seen just ever-growing, useless evolution. And I think that my mom has told me countless times, she used to see a view from where we were on Eighth Avenue. We were blocks away from the beach. I understand that we are a tourist town. We have to do all this fun stuff, but we are not LA. We're not Miami. We can't afford this. And also, is this building going to be affordable for anybody? Honestly? I just want to know that, and I really have trouble with parking as everybody else. I would really like if this wasn't built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Polly Shulga. I'm representing Asbury Park and Complete Streets Coalition. I just wanted to say hello, thank you. Most of you are probably here for this, this project, and you're probably maybe going to leave after this conversation is over. So I wanted to just bring to your attention the very last resolution, whether we were going to be talking about this again at the end of the meeting, I don't know. But the last resolution establishing and adopting a Vision Zero policy and a goal for the city of Asbury Park is huge, and I just want to say thank you. This is, it's a very big deal. If, if you all are not familiar with what Vision Zero means, it means not eliminating, but, but reducing crashes and enabling people to get around a city safely, reducing deaths and serious injuries due to crashes, and especially the, the, the impact of cars when crashes occur so that people don't die or are not seriously injured in crashes. Crashes may still occur, but designing streets so that they are no longer easy to speed on. Speeding is one of the biggest, we all are very much aware of the speeding that takes place in Asbury Park all the time. So the redesigning and looking at the, the built environment so that we can make the city more walkable and rollable. So I just, that's, that's really all I wanted to say was thank you. I don't know how much more conversation we'll have about this tonight, but it is the last resolution. And again, thank you for bringing it up, and I hope you'll vote for it. It isn't just a resolution. It means that stuff has to happen, that things have to change, that building, that, that infrastructure has to be, has to be implemented. So I hope you'll all just go to visionzero network dot, I think it's dot org or dot com. Go to apcompletestreets.org. I have a couple of cards with me, and you can read about it, read what Vision Zero means, and how you can get involved. It would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for your kind words and for your input in getting this to our attention, even though it's statewide attention. And this is going to be an action plan with community involvement to get to that Vision Zero policy where like by 2020, hopefully, many years before that, we cut down, if not eliminate, all serious injuries, be it vehicles and pedestrians.
The governor did sign a Target Zero bill, by the way, and we are following, just two weeks ago, that bill was signed. So any cities in New Jersey that are establishing a Vision Zero policy are going to bolster the Target Zero bill that the governor signed, meaning that the entire state will start to, we actually are one of the top states for, for deaths and, and injuries of pedestrians and bicyclists. So we want to, you know, get rid of that statistic, and by 2040, eliminate crashes, deaths, and injuries. So that's, it's a pretty tall order, but I think we are moving in the right direction. Thank you so much.
Again, I have to give kudos to James Banana, our transportation planner, who with short notice was able to pull this together and get something that's out there and can be tweaked down the road. But again, the big thing is that there's going to be community involvement in this with probably quarterly meetings down the road addressing everything. So James, great job. Thank you.
Tom Pavinski, 1607 Emery Street. I'm the chair of the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. Two issues. One, this One, this proposed plan here is lovely in terms of hardscape, but there's very little in terms of greenscape. I'm not exactly sure why that has been omitted, but a few trees and maybe about a foot and a half of grass is not going to really help that area. Gabriella mentioned earlier that it's already flood-prone, and that's only going to make it worse, because where's the water gonna go? So I think that's an important piece to remember. And secondly, I was here several months ago, I guess it was, telling you that the Shade Tree Commission no longer has a van at its disposal, and I have asked the city to look into the possibility of getting a van or a cargo van or truck or something that the commission can use, because the weather is miserable right now. But in a very few days, it's going to be lovely. And we have no way of getting around, we have no way of taking care of our gardens, we have no way of taking care of our trees. So please, remember that. Thank you.
We're working on it, and we're working on our budget, and you know, that will be a proposed piece of the budget, and hopefully we'll be able to do it. Thank you.
Mary Velino, 1700 Webb Street. Hi, council, thank you, and it's nice to see a big crowd here tonight. This is one of, I think, three or four major projects that we're looking at on Kingsley North End, I think one of the attorneys for the Delta and a couple of other things that are here. Every time we get one of these, to Tom's point, less trees and less green space. I don't know if we have an answer to it. Is this going to be pet-friendly, this building now with ninety-some-odd units again? I don't know if it's answered or not. I believe the other two that have been approved are pet-friendly. There's no grass. Say it again? So I was here for, every time I come here, I don't even own a dog. So I'd like the consideration for more green space, more grass, helps the runoff, helps the heat. So whether we're at zero variance and we talk about, you know, the five feet, again, this is six feet. So let's consider where our buildings are placed, how tall they're placed, the impact of the shade and the lack of grass, and help the dogs out, all right? Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else like to be heard? A motion to close?
All in favor?
Before we go on, Michelle, I gotta ask you a question. If you don't know the answer, no problem, because I should have thought of it beforehand. Not on this project, on all projects. I'm guessing a shade study wasn't done, because if I live here, my house is like this, and I got a building next to me, and I got my tomato garden in the back, I ain't growing tomatoes. So I mean, can we ask for a shit? We can ask for anything. What's the recommendation?
If council would feel more comfortable, you know, with a shade study, you can ask the proposed developer more one.
Okay, I think it would help, and I think not just for this project, for every project going forward, just because shade, if I own a two-story house and I got an eight-story building next to me, I'm going to be in the dark the rest of my life. So I mean, okay, so again, not just pick it on you. I think it's something we should ask for everybody from here on out. Okay, thank you.
And then just a quick question, Kevin. You have Asbury Park Luxury Apartments. Are these apartments or condos?
They're not. The name is confusing, but it's Asbury, it's full for sale units. And that is actually a requirement of the subsequent developer agreement, yes. Waterfront, I'm sorry, waterfront.
Okay, unless you have anything else you want to add?
I know, I wanted to thank you, I wanted to thank you for giving us the time. I wanted to thank you, members of the public who come out. I appreciate their commitment to the city. And again, just in closing, I would say thank you, and our plan, our proposal is largely consistent. I know people are concerned with use, density, height, and stories. They do comply, and I know there's a lot of concern about that front setback. Again, we comply. In fact, it's, sending it back is less consistent with the plan, but I appreciate these comments. Deputy Mayor Quinn, we're going to get you that information on the floor-to-ceiling heights. Give us a couple of days to get that information. And Mr. Mayor, I will speak to the client regarding the request for a shade study so that if we do go to the planning board, and when we do go to the planning board, we can have that so that everyone, public, and the planning board members can have that information, because it's a fair question.
Okay, deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
And also, would you please make sure that you send the information to all of us?
That you're gonna send to the mayor and as well to the deputy? Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I should have implied that, but yes, good, good, good point. Anything we submit, we'll go through the clerk's office or Michelle's office and make sure everybody gets it. So thank you.
Okay, just a question, Michelle. Just procedural. Now it happens.
Well, now?
This doesn't just automatically go to the planning board without a vote on it?
We'd have to, we'd have to vote. Let's just say you make changes, then it would come to us to vote, to put, to go to planning.
No, then Michelle explain.
Okay, that's part, that's part two. The next part is, is an SDA, a subsequent redevelopment agreement. And if so desired, and in a resolution that adopts the SDA, it also sends it to the planning board with you as the redevelopment entity authorizing it to go forward. I would say, if you are interested in a shadow study and the proposed developer is agreeing to it, that they do it sooner rather than later, that they do it now.
But I just want everybody to know, myself to know, like, this is not going to the planning board until we vote on it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, is this a vote that we would come to, or? I'm sorry, is it a vote that we would come to, that we notice for, or?
No, so the next part is ironing out details in the SDA about this project. So that is the next step, and yes, of course, it would be a public meeting here, and that if going, you know, at that point, be a resolution adopting an SDA and then referring it to the planning board. That's the, in the development steps for the waterfront, that is the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Have a good evening. Yep.
We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting.
Let's wait a couple of minutes for everybody to leave, so we have some, we can hear ourselves vote.
Do you need one of these?
No, I'm fine, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna ask you all, we're gonna ask you all to take your conversations outside, please, so we can proceed. Yeah, everyone got it. Thank you.
Okay, and you?
Anthony tried to, couldn't get you to send an email, you didn't have the phone number. We didn't want you to come down, because we knew we were gonna do it.
You're gonna, you're gonna support it?
Yes. Please, yes. Why not? Thank you. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Go ahead.
We are now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes for the January 29th meeting. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 202597, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 202596, resolution approving special event applications.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 202598, resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriation reserves in the fiscal year 2024 budget. Do you have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 202599, resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for 2025 budget.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
You are.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 202578, resolution ratifying the Superior Officers Association Local Number Six of the Patrolman's Benevolent Association of the State of New Jersey Union Contract.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025100, resolution authorizing the purchase of a thickener transfer pump needed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025101, resolution authorizing the annual renewal of Adobe.
Move it.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025102, resolution authorizing an annual boiler service agreement with Superior Central Boiler.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025103, resolution authorizing an agreement with Mazza Recycling for the processing and disposition of recyclable materials.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025104, resolution authorizing agreement with JCP&L.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025105, resolution authorizing a professional service contract for state police accreditation maintenance.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2025106, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park determining that the development of affordable housing for the project known as the Memorial Family Community and Education Center will address an existing need in the city of Asbury Park for house, for home program financing. Block 802, lots one through three and five, 1200, 1210 Springwood Avenue, and 39 and 43 Atkins Avenue.
I have a question on this.
Move it.
Second.
Question.
Question. So where is, what is the location exactly?
You know where the Turf Club is?
Springwood Avenue.
The land right around the Turf Club.
Okay, and how many units are they putting in there? Four?
Paul?
Eight.
Eight affordable units.
And these, when you say affordable, may I ask him a question? When you say affordable, is it very low, low, moderate, or workforce?
Wood moderate units, two of which will be compliant with UHAC.
I didn't hear the last part, I'm sorry.
All eight units will be affordable for wood moderate units, two of which will be compliant with UHAC.
And they're also moving their headquarters some eight hundred block or four to here, and they're also putting in an Asbury Park museum.
Okay. Are you asking for a pilot?
No.
No? And the affordable units, is it going to be for thirty years?
We're seeking an affordable housing construction subsidy right now via the home program. The requirement is for affordability period of twenty years. The two units that will be credible to the city of Asbury Park will hold in UHAC, which would make it for a period of thirty years for those two units.
UHAC, what?
UHAC housing affordability controls the state of New Jersey.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2025107, resolution appointing usable housing liaison.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
I have a question. Is this, for this position, are we hiring someone for this?
That's the city clerk.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bez Anderson, yes. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, I'm right, it is the city clerk, right?
Yes, city clerk, yes, correct, yep. Resolution 2025108, resolution establishing and adopting Vision Zero policy and goal for the city of Asbury Park.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now moving on to ordinances for introduction. I have ordinance 2025-5, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing Chapter Four entitled General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park to amend special event fees with a public hearing date of February 26, 2025. Do you have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?[1655.36]